I call a meeting in order. Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tap into online news, file with the township clerk, and post it on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Here.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Here.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. This meeting is open to the public for comments on items on the agenda. See you now. I'd say welcome back, but we were just here two weeks ago. We never left.
No.
I did.
But you were still here for these meetings.
For these meetings.
So, well, welcome back to the official start of the school year. Yes, and might I say that this was fantastic timing that we chose to have a board meeting on the day before school. Let's make sure we don't do that again. There's things to be done this evening. There's backpacks.
There can all be things you don't have to do tonight.
Wait, oh, no, no, it's all good, right? Nothing, nothing going on tomorrow morning. It's all good. All right, well, since there is a lot going on tomorrow morning, we have not a big agenda, thankfully, a couple of things, though. And the first is our board presentation of the 9/11 memorial presentation. And Mr. Paul Iaccone is going to come up and present us. What'd you say? What about the name? I did. Oh, he should, yeah. You should have to say your name and kind of where you live anyway, because you're up, right?
Address, though?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Paul Iaccone, 37 Ozone Avenue, Cedar Grove, New Jersey. At this time, I'd like to present to the Cedar Grove Board of Education this certificate for steel that we got from the World Trade Center, from the Port Authority PBA, and the WTC Memorial Fund. This certificate awarded on September 4, 2018. This steel was cut from the ruins of the World Trade Center from steel acquired from the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey by the Port Authority Police Benevolence Association. The steel was cut by a member of the Port Authority of New York, New Jersey Police Department in honor and memory of all those lost on and after September 11, 2001. On behalf of the men and women of the Port Authority Police Department and a grateful nation, we present this steel to the Cedar Grove Board of Education.
Thank you.
As you should also, Mr. Shoner. Yes, we should absolutely. Mr. Chair.
I'll take it.
Okay. By the way, thank you. This is amazing that we have brought this, and thank you to Mr. Shoner, who's known so much.
Well, it's so exciting. Listen, it's one of the things that we do for the WTC Memorial Fund is we raise money to give scholarships away, and we do a lot of good things, but the main thing is don't forget, never forget our friends and family members, and I love the fact that Cedar Grove is teaching our students with the flags. We put so much time into it, and with the flags and the steel and the memorial that's going to be there, we'll just keep trying to make it bigger and better every year. I'm grateful for you letting us do this.
You know, one of the things we always talk about is we want to, it's really three components. I always say it's honor, remember, and educate. So it's really those three, those are the three components of why we do it and why the board and everyone's been so fantastic about it.
Yeah, it's excellent.
The fact that there's just going to be a tangible reminder forever, I think is incredible. We appreciate that.
That's beautiful.
It's very essential.
Really is. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
One, two, three. I'm going to get on this back to it. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. Thank you, my friend.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you next week.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. As soon as he confirms, all you know. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
You're the keeper of important things, Mr. DeChiaro. There you go. You weren't sitting down. All right, and just when you think you can't top that, I'm gonna with the next thing.
I just wanted, no, I just wanted to let everyone know that. So what is going on is that through the Port Authority PBA and also through the World Trade Center Memorial Fund, they are going to be giving us a permanent monument that we're going to be displaying at Cedar Grove High School. They've given us a four-foot piece of World Trade Center steel that is going to be mounted on marble and a stand, and we are going to display it outside of the high school auditorium for, it'll be a permanent monument that will be held out there. And so what Mr. Iaccone was doing was giving us more or less a certificate that says that the steel is indeed the steel from the World Trade and that the PBA manages any sort of steel that is given out now. And so, you know, it'll be displayed hopefully, well, no, it will be displayed by our September 11 ceremony.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So just to qualify it. Okay, sorry.
And what time does the ceremony start?
So I believe the way it's going to work is we're doing it in joint with the town, and so we have to work out the little details with Mr. Mangili once more, but I believe around 8:15, 8:20, they take everyone out of the high school, all the high school kids come out, the entire building empties, and comes down to where the auditorium section is, and then there's, we have bagpiper, and there'll be Mrs. Dai and Mr. Featherman, and Mr. Sikala will say something, and then we have about 22 seniors read the timeline of events that happened that day. And, yeah, and we're also, this year, we're going to talk about, just very briefly, the two Cedar Grove folks that passed. We're still in touch, the one sister stays in touch with her brother, and the one son lives in Verona. So, yes. So it'll be around 8:15, 8:20. I just, we'll confirm Mr. Mangili tomorrow, once the system's up and running.
That's great, because this is the first year we're actually doing it with the town also. We talked about that last year, because the town no longer does a service, or at least they didn't last year. And so we thought it would be nice just to incorporate, you know, with the town, just because so many people come, and it's such an amazing experience, just the entire thing, just to see the flags and just the ceremony itself, and it's extremely moving.
Right, so we're just going to combine them all together.
Yeah, great. It's nice.
Great.
All right, and that obviously is next Tuesday.
Yes.
Moving on. All right, from the office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under B1, can I have a, actually, first, can I have a motion for B1?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, B1 is a motion to appoint Mrs. Michelle Miga as trustee for the vacant board seat through the term ending December 31, 2018. Any discussion?
Hell.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. And now will Mrs. Miga come up?
Can't believe you're taking half our audience away.
I know.
Got it. All right, please raise your right hand, and please repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Michelle Miga, do solemnly swear or affirm?
Aye, Michelle Miga, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state under the authority of the people.
And this state under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, Michelle Miga, do solemnly swear or affirm?
Aye, Michelle Miga, do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law?
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a board of education.
For the office of a member of a board of education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19, semi-colon, 4-1?
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19, semi-colon, 4-1?
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime?
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed in NJS-18A, semi-colon, 12-1?
Or offense listed in NJS-18A, semi-colon, 12-1?
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly?
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly?
Perform all the duties of that office?
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Have a seat. Thank you.
But none of us had to do any of that.
No. That's not true. We all did.
The first year I got on the board, my family came. It was very exciting. My kids were little at the time, and...
How'd they work that second time around?
Well, the first time, one of them had to use the bathroom, and they all missed it.
Yes.
Yes, they missed it, and they never came back again. You miss the first time, forget it. Moving on. All right, so Ms. Miga, Mr. Chair will help you in terms of, you know, motions and stuff like that. It's kind of on the job, you know?
Okay, on the job training.
Exactly.
It's all good.
All right. All right, moving on. Under minutes, can I have a motion for B2 and B3?
So moved.
Second.
B2 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of August 21, 2018, and B3 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B4 through B12?
So moved.
Second.
B4 is a motion to approve the below rates for the 2018-19 school year for the use of Cedar Grove Fields and Facilities. B5 is a motion to retroactively approve the proposals from Franklin Floors, Inc., in the amount listed. B6 is a motion to approve the contract with the Center for Effective School Practices at the rate listed. B7 is a motion to approve the application for use of Cedar Grove Fields and Facilities for the Township of Cedar Grove Downtown Advisory Committee. B8 is a motion to approve a revised cost of bus route listed there. B9 is a motion to accept the generous gift of steel that was cut from the ruins of the World Trade Center from the Port Authority of New York, New Jersey by the Port Authority Police Benevolent Association. A statue will be constructed on the front lawn of Cedar Grove High School in honor and memory of all those lost on and after September 11, 2001. B10 is a motion to approve the location agreement with Red Marble Media. B11 is a motion to approve a transportation jointure with Passaic Valley Board of Education. And B12 is a motion to approve the location agreement with Room Content, Inc. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S21?
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to retroactively approve Gabrielle Castelli, Memorial Middle School paraprofessional, at the rate listed. S2 is a motion to retroactively approve Sidra Demato, South End School paraprofessional, at the rate listed. S3 is a motion to retroactively approve the resignation of Linda Forsyth, South End School paraprofessional. S4 is a motion to rescind Christine Carabesto's substitute teacher and retroactively approve Christine as Memorial Middle School part-time ESL teacher at the rate listed. S5 is a motion to rescind Gulnas Gerham, substitute teacher, and retroactively approve Gulnas, South End School paraprofessional, at the rate listed. S6 is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring start date procedures. S7 is a motion to rescind Joanne Marriott, South End School paraprofessional, full-time, at the rate listed, and retroactively approve employment as afternoon South End paraprofessional at the rate listed. S8 is a motion to retroactively approve Joanne Marriott, High School part-time special ed teacher, at the rate listed. She's doing a lot. S9 is a motion to accept the resignation of Derek Gaduto, High School Social Studies teacher. S10 is a motion to rescind Steve Gallagher, High School Vice Principal, as of September 3, 2018. And S11 is a motion to voluntarily transfer Steve Gallagher, High School Social Studies teacher, at the step listed, effective September 4. S12 is a motion to approve the following stipend rates as per the sidebar agreement between the CGA and the Board of Education. S13 is a motion to rescind Michael Barriere from Memorial Middle School Drama Production stipend. S14 is a motion to approve Cheryl Johansson, North End School Lunch Duty substitute. S15 is a motion to approve the following co-curricular positions at the high school for the 2018-19 school year. S16 is a motion to approve the following co-curricular positions at Memorial Middle School for the 18-19 school year. S17 is a motion to approve Ginger Meteski as a volunteer for the Bargello Club in the middle school for the 18-19 school year. S18 is a motion to approve the following salary degree advances for the 18-19 school year. S19 is a motion to approve the following as school volunteers. S20 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events, and S21 is a motion to rescind the appointment of Mary Ann Assaro Illardi, a substitute teacher for the 18-19 school year. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I just want to say that earlier today, I gave a speech welcoming everybody for the new year, and I talked about how when great teachers leave, they leave a void. And I am sorry to see Mr. Gaduto leave, and he will be leaving a void. On a good note, however, even though Mr. Gallagher will no longer be the vice principal, he's returning to the classroom, and we are extremely excited about that, and that's effective tomorrow. So good luck to Mr. Gallagher, and we wish him well, and search now will continue or start for our new VP at the high school.
Shall begin.
Absolutely. So, roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under policies, can I have a motion for S22?
So moved.
Second.
S22 is a motion to approve the second reading of the following policy updates and revisions. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. There's a lot. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. Yes.
Other half of our audience.
I know.
Yeah, I know.
Kelly Lombardi, 15... You have to speak into the microphone for everybody at home. Even though we can...
Do you want to move, or do you want to move a closer?
Yeah, you can.
Yes, there you go.
And this is really high.
You can lower it.
There we go. Okay. Kelly Lombardi, 15 Donato Drive, Cedar Grove. Mr. Featherman already knows why I'm here. I already emailed him today, so, but I still wanted to come and present my case. I have an issue with the busing. I was here a few years ago regarding the busing. There was kind of a Band-Aid fix put on, which kind of worked for a few years, but the real issue I don't think was ever fully addressed. The problem is, is that I know that the state requirement is students in the middle school have to be two miles away from the middle school to be bused. High school, it's two and a half miles. That's the state minimum. That's what they require. I think we can do better. My daughter got a notice that she is not getting the bus anymore. She had been, I guess, grandfathered in, because I still have a student in the middle school, so she was allowed to ride the bus the last few years. We are technically, I guess, 2.4 miles if you drive it. If she were to walk it, she would actually have to walk through a neighborhood of her fellow students in our neighborhood who are being bused, because when you pull into their neighborhood, you have to zigzag around to get to their houses. We are a straight shot off of Montclair Ave, so we lose that one, whatever, tenth of a mile, and we lose out. But the problem with that is that, you know, it's just not a safe walk. It's not. I've walked it myself to see. I grew up in town. I've walked it one end of town to the other my entire life. I know where to walk. I know where the paths are. I know the cut-throughs. I know the dangerous parking lots. I know all of that. I've always done it, and I have to say honestly, I would not walk on Pompton Ave where my daughter has to walk. It is dangerous. It is, the center of town, people tend to slow down because there's the lights, you know, it goes down to one lane periodically. When you are at the further reaches of north end of town, people fly over there. There are tractor trailers. They are flying to get to Industrial Village. There is no real safe way to walk home. I did it myself a few years back, and you have to cross Pompton Ave a minimum of four times to get from the high school to our neighborhood. The reason being is that there are not enough sidewalks. The sidewalks stop, you have to cross, then you have to go, then there's the sidewalk stop again, you have to cross back over. There's not a consistent sidewalk on either side of the street. So you're crossing at what I consider to be very busy and dangerous intersections at a busy and dangerous time of the day, at 3:00, 3:30, when all the parents are racing around town, you've got the high school kids getting out of school. It's just not safe. The other thing is that in the wintertime, those intersections aren't cleared. I've driven by them myself, where people have to go all the way out into the other lane to get around. Nobody's really getting to them, or if they do, it takes quite a few days to get to them, especially by the nursing home at the corner of Linsley and Pompton. That's extremely dangerous. If you ever have seen the people waiting pretty much on Pompton Ave at the bus stop by the old BFW, because that doesn't really get shoveled out right away, I guess it's not a top priority, you know, and that's the sidewalk. So where do they walk? It's just a bad situation. So the problem is, is that when you guys use this program that I've heard about, and you're punching in the addresses, which I'm envisioning, you know, Google Maps, MapQuest, you know, whatever, and you get an accurate, you do, you get an accurate measurement of where you're going. Like I said, our neighborhood, there are kids, when you come down Montclair Ave and you go to the right, those kids, it's zigzaggy in there. They qualify. You go to the left, we don't qualify, but yet we're further. And I have a map that I can show you. I got this map from the town. They were kind enough to give this to me way back when I was here a few years ago. So just to show you what I'm talking about, okay. This is the high school. This blue line, Pompton Ave. This is the neighborhood that I'm talking about. These kids all qualify. They're technically 2.5 miles from the high school. Here's my house. It's clearly past. I mean, it's, she would have to literally, because there's a little path here, she would cut through here, walk through where all her friends have gotten off the bus. She'd be walking by herself, because all her friends are getting the bus, and she'd have to walk through to get home. I don't know how many other kids this affected. She's the only one I know of so far. The few other families that I know in the neighborhood, they are in this spot, and they qualified. Their high schoolers qualified. I do appreciate the fact that the last few years, she was grandfathered in, but I don't feel like it ever really addressed the issue. I feel like, my suggestion is, is if you know that these kids are 2.5 miles, then clearly everybody past them should also get on the bus. I mean, there's just, it's very few streets. It just doesn't make sense to me to pick and choose handfuls of kids that don't qualify while other ones do. I understand that there's, the requirement is 2.5, but that's the bare minimum. I feel like we can do better. It's a safety issue. I have no problem with my children walking. My parents live in the center of town. My children have, after activities and such, walked to my parents' house. I have no problem with that. I will drop my kids off at Panther Park. They are all around the center of town. I have no problem with them walking and being out and about, but it's too far. I mean, we are almost down by 7-Eleven. You know, my kids can walk to 7-Eleven in a minute. It's just really not safe, and I, again, I just think that we can do better. I get that it's the minimum, but if you're looking at it, and there's kids that are 2.5 miles, then everybody past them should qualify for the bus. I'm kind of think it's a no-brainer. You know, I don't know what can be done. I feel like this is just a space-saving maneuver, because we don't want to get an extra bus, and I think it's time we just sucked it up and got an extra bus. You know, I mean, we've got, it's a dangerous situation, and I'd hate to see something happen to somebody, not just my daughter, but anybody else who got kicked off the bus this year. You know, I hope that you guys will reconsider, and the policy, I think it should be changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, a couple of things, because Mr. Featherman did talk to us about this, and the neighborhood that you referenced is actually, because you have to go up and around, it actually is farther away than the neighborhood that you're in, so we absolutely have not done a situation where we pick and choose who's going to be on the bus.
No, I'm not saying anybody...
Well, but you did. You said, "pick and choose."
No, no, but you're, when you're doing the measurements individually, you are picking, I mean, you are picking and choosing, but we are further.
But not according to the software that we're using, you're not. So, but anyway, so we...
If you, when she walks, she will be walking through that neighborhood to get...
But that's the way she's walking. When we look at it, though, we look at it as the drivable distance, right?
But there is another way to walk.
Right, but we're looking at it as the way you drive. Like, for instance, for my child, my child, it's not a busing situation, but, you know, my child can choose to drive, walk all the way down Ridge Road, you know, by himself on a scary road where who knows who is walking by, or he can choose to go left through the woods. And, yeah, the woods would be significantly shorter, but I don't necessarily want him doing that either, but when we measure it, we measure it from the distance from the school to our house as if you were driving a car. A couple of years ago, we did a, we did a survey, right, as far as parents. We sent a survey around for parents, because obviously, the cost of additional buses is a huge expense. So it's not a matter also of sucking it up and getting an extra bus, because if we suck it up and get an extra bus, then we have to get not just a bus for your neighborhood, but potentially everybody who's not in that area, or who's not within, greater than a two-mile, right. And I think a few years ago, that was to the tune of over $400,000 a year, and when we did the survey and we asked parents, overwhelmingly, they were not interested in paying more in taxes for that. And I get that, you know, if we could, we'd bus everyone, absolutely, but just cost-wise,[1610.12]
But there is no other way for her to walk.
Right, but we're looking at it as the way you drive. Like, for instance, for my child, my child, it's not a busing situation, but, you know, my child can choose to drive, walk all the way down Ridge Road, you know, by himself on a scary road where who knows who is walking by, or he can choose to go left through the woods. And, yeah, the woods would be significantly shorter, but I don't necessarily want him doing that either, but when we measure it, we measure it from the distance from the school to our house as if you were driving a car. A couple of years ago, we did a, we did a survey, right, as far as parents, we sent a survey around for parents, because obviously, the cost of additional buses is a huge expense. So it's not a matter also of sucking it up and getting an extra bus, because if we suck it up and get an extra bus, then we have to get not just a bus for your neighborhood, but potentially everybody who's not in that area, or who's not within, greater than a two-mile, right. And I think a few years ago, that was to the tune of over $400,000 a year, and when we did the survey, and we asked parents, overwhelmingly, they were not interested in paying more in taxes for that. And I get that, you know, if we could, we'd bus everyone, absolutely, but just cost-wise, we, I sit on the finance committee, I've sat on the finance committee for the last seven years, and this year was the toughest of all, trying to figure out how we just make the budget, and we couldn't even get a, you know, a media specialist, I don't want to open up that can of worms, but I'm going to. So there's so many competing priorities, and I'm not saying that this is...
Safety is...
Absolutely, I agree, but we just, we don't have 400 and something thousand dollars to put towards extra buses. Now, what I think maybe this should be, is a wider conversation with our friends at the town council in terms of, you know, is there something we can do about sidewalks in town? You know, there are a lot of kids who walk, who walk home, you know, are we doing enough as far as, because the town employs the crossing guards, is that an accurate statement, right? They do that. Is there something that they can do to kind of make it a little bit safer for the kids?
When we approached it a few years ago, they said no.
Well, you know, it's a, it's a whole new town council now, so maybe we can sit down at our upcoming joint meeting...
Right.
And talk about that, you know? I mean, in all honesty, because, you know, we all have kids, we all have kids going to school, and absolutely, nobody's disputing the fact that it, you know, as far as safety, I mean, that's, I mean, we talk, we were having a referendum all about safety and security because safety's incredibly important to us, but I just, you know, busing-wise, we just, I don't even know how we would come up with, you know, that much additional money, in all honesty.
It's a struggle.
No, I'm not...
It's a struggle. Four hundred thousand dollars.
No, it's a struggle to weigh everything.
Oh, absolutely, it is.
Right.
I actually feel like there needs, because there's a lot of parents who don't put their kids on the bus, so if you were able to find out, like, I don't know, before I was able to get my kids' schedules this year, I designed a bunch of forms to be able to get their schedules. Hey, how about anybody who's supposed to take the bus, put a form up? They have to say, are you taking the bus or are you not taking the bus? Then you have an accurate accounting of seats, and there wouldn't be extra seats, or, you know, then you would know. You know, make people accountable for, are you committing to taking the bus or are you not taking the bus? Because I know, I know quite a few people who are eligible for the bus, but they don't go. So, you know, you can say the bus is full, but it's not, it wasn't full last year, like, it's, you know...
Yeah, and along those, right, you're right, and along those lines, after, as I said in my email reply, after the first couple of weeks, we're going to re-audit ridership, and typically what we've seen over the years is a decline in that number.
Oh, yeah.
And so we will, at that point, once we've determined there are empty seats, we'll be reaching out to folks such as yourself and several others that have also contacted us about this for paid contracts to ride that bus. It's $884 for the year, and it's, it's an option.
But there's nothing that can be done right now until we see what happens, right?
Correct, at this point, every bus is truly full.
Future years, I mean, you could probably get an accurate accounting before school week starts.
Well, people are...
This year, I thought that was great, having to find self-forms before you could get your kids' schedules, honestly, because it forced you to do it. Put it on there.
I don't think, I mean, I...
Yeah, but people are reluctant to waive that right, they want to maintain their right on a bad weather day.
I know that some people might want to say, you know...
In fact, most...
Some people will just say, no, I'm home, and I'm always going to drive my kids.
You're right, and we've, in years past, we've made contact with those folks, we look at the list of qualified riders, and we contact those who aren't on the bus, and there have been conversations where they say, oh, no, we never ride the bus, or, we started early on, but we no longer, and so those are the conversations we have, we're going to have those again, we're going to see where we are in two weeks, and if there are extra seats, empty seats, we're going to reach out to you folks.
And that's typically what we do every year, right?
It is, yeah.
After a couple of weeks, we see where ridership is, I mean, and part of it is some parents just don't know at the beginning at what the situation's going to be.
But then I also feel like if that's the case, then I feel like it should be opened up to, you know, like, you know, we're in the same neighborhood, and these kids are getting the bus, and we're further, and we are, we're further, she's got to walk through that neighborhood. I get that it's driving directions, it's, you know, I think that we can just do better. I think we need to open up spots and find out who's not riding the bus, and open it up to...
But as Mr. Featherman said, that's exactly what he's going to do after two weeks, right?
No, I know, I'm just saying we need to open it up to, like, my family or other families who are on my street that are, that might be affected, I don't know, I haven't reached out to everybody, but, you know, it just, it just, I mean, when you look at the map, you can clearly see that she's got to walk farther. So just basing on driving directions alone, you know, I get that that's the way it's done, but I think we can go from there and experiment, because it just, you know, my street is clearly past of drive. I don't know, I just, I feel like we should, it should be opened up, once you hit that two and a half mark, everybody past that should just be on the bus, it's just not the option to walk, it's not, and I won't allow it to walk.
Well, like I said, I think we should have a conversation with our friends in the town council and see if there's something we can kind of do in conjunction, let's look at the, you know, the streets, is there anything we can do about sidewalks, is there anything we can do about, you know, crossing guards?
Crossing guards, that's right, yes.
And we'll talk to them, I believe we've been invited to a meeting at some point, where they get to be determined date, but it's coming up.
But they want to do, they want to do another joint meeting, yeah.
All right.